Okay. It is now 5:02 PM. I will go ahead and read the notice of the special meeting. Notice of a special meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, joint teleconference open meeting pursuant to chapter 551, title 5, section 551.041 of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act notice is hereby given that the City Commission and the Brownsville Public Utilities Board of the City of Brownsville will conduct a special meeting on Tuesday, August 11, 2020 at 5:00 PM via Zoom teleconference by logging on to the Zoom site. The meeting agenda was posted on the City of Brownsville Agenda Center for members to be able to participate. I will go ahead and take roll call and then we'll allow PUB to read their notes. Commissioner Cowan.
Present.
Commissioner Galansky.
Here.
Commissioner Petro.
Present.
Commissioner Nees.
I'm here.
Mayor Mendez.
Here.
Okay, and as mentioned, Commissioner Mungia is out and Commissioner Gowan will join us in a while. Members of the PUB, would you like to read your notice, please?
Hi, good evening. It is Tuesday, August 11, 2020. The time is 5:03 PM. Ms. Sanchez, will you do the roll call, please?
Yes. Judy Benavides.
Here.
Sandra Langley.
Here.
Sandra Science.
Here.
Tim Loops.
Here I am.
Patricio Sampaio.
Here.
Mayor Mendez.
I'm here.
Go ahead, Madam Chair.
Thank you. With the quorum present, I will now call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. Let me begin by first thanking our PUB employees for their continued efforts to serve our community during this difficult time and to welcome our guests to today's meeting. This is a great mechanism to work collaboratively, share information, challenges, needs, and come up with some possible solutions. At this time, do we have any public comments?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bruschiak.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, mayor, city commission. We do have a presentation discussion of the Tenaska Generation Project 2012 rate adjustment used in the support same cost and expenditures, other uses of funds, remaining balances, and possible uses of funds therein in bond ordinance restraints. I do have the PowerPoint that should be brought up. It starts off with the slide with the agenda.
Excuse me, Mr. Bruschiak, if I can please say a few words because on ours, we skipped the invocation on our agenda. I don't know if anyone.
Sure. Okay, sure.
Yes, we do. Pastor Brad here. Pastor Brad?
Yes, I'm here. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for the many blessings we have here in Brownsville. Lord God, we thank you for the fact that we have our own utility company. We thank you for the leaders that we have before us here today. We ask you to lead and guide all of our leaders from our president to our governor to our county judge, our mayor, and all the leaders at PUB. Lord God, we ask for divine wisdom for each of them, specifically for this meeting here today. Lord, we also ask for healing for those people that need it in our community. We ask for comfort for those that have lost loved ones during this time. And Lord, we ask you to lead and guide each of us to be the encouragement that everyone else needs. We ask all of these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. And now we'll have a short moment of silence where people can add their prayers to what has already been spoken. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
At this time, also for the city commission agenda, we also had the public comment period, but we did not have anyone sign up for that public comment. I will go ahead and read the items for individual consideration. On our end, it's presentation and discussion of the Tenaska Brownsville Generation Project 2012 rate adjustment used in support of same costs and expenditures, other uses of funds, remaining balances, and possible uses of funds therein and bond ordinance restraint. You may proceed, Mr. Bruschiak.
Thank you very much. Again, members of the commission, mayor, board chair, board members. Appreciate being here. It's good to see everyone safe and being able to discuss things tonight with us. Want to go over a short agenda that we're going to present tonight. Fernando Science, Leandro Garcia, and myself. We'll have questions as we go along. Want to talk first, the second slide is going to be the Tenaska project. We'll talk about Tenaska rates. The use of surplus revenues, including the Tenaska Equity Fund for the bond ordinance. Then we'll talk about Tenaska Equity Fund project list and possible uses of some of the funding that we have that we collected associated with the Tenaska project. We'll end up with the, we have an MOU between the city and PUB for energy efficiency programs for the city of Brownsville. And I thought this presentation would be very beneficial, particularly to some of the new commissioners and a refresher to some of the old commissioners on the Tenaska projects, the rate increases that went into effect, uses of those rate increases in our equity fund that we've collected. And then when we finish, have a dialogue between both the commission and the board. We had committed to meet more frequently before first of the year, at least quarterly, I think, or at least several times a year to share what the city's doing and share what the PUB is doing. Unfortunately, when COVID-19 hit, we hadn't been able to do that. But I do think we have a lot of things to share with you and communicate with you, both tonight and some big things coming forward that we want to set the stage for that and work with the city going forward. So first off, we're going to start off with a summary of what was the Tenaska project, how it started and how it ended. And I'll ask Fernando Science, our Assistant General Manager, Chief Operating Officer, to go through that. If you have any questions, please ask.
Thank you, John. Mayor, members of the commission, Madam Chair, and members of our board here. I'm pleased to give you a little bit of a background of what the Tenaska project was about. And these, I thought, were some of the most important questions that probably have come up while you're out in the community. And so I'm going to go through these four questions. First off, why did Brownsville Public Utilities Board and the City of Brownsville, why did we pursue the Tenaska project? To just to light on that, at the time that the decision was made, we had a transmission system that came into the valley area that was constrained. So we went to the decision makers all the way up to the Public Utility Commission and were able to get them to build a high voltage 345 KV transmission line, which really helped to stabilize the grid here as well as to allow us to meet the needs of economic development prospects as they came up. So really, when you look at where we were back then, there really wasn't very much of throughput or like availability to bring any energy into the area. And so that was the biggest problem that we had to reliability and to economic development. So what we did was, we, you know, we did some studies and we presented those studies to our board and then to the commission. But the main reasons for the construction of the project was to meet that growth that the city was encountering. At that time, the city was growing a lot more rapidly than it is today. And we did have a lot more economic development prospects that came to the city. But unfortunately, they left because there wasn't sufficiency of energy supply to be able to meet their demands. With that said, the transmission line that was built into the area that we helped to sponsor here from Brownsville Public Utilities Board really did to help improve the reliability to the grid itself and also to stabilize the local grid and to enhance the pricing opportunities that we might might then be able to deliver to our customers. The last was, as you do a project and you decide to do a project, we could have made a decision to do a project somewhere outside of the valley area. But by deciding to do a project here, we brought a generator into the area that would be more than adequate to meet the needs of our community, but also would be able to handle the economic prospects that were coming and knocking on our door. On top of that, the economic impact that a large plant like that would reveal to the city would be in taxation, tax base, and also with the jobs that could be created. Those are the primary reasons for why the decision was made to pursue the project here locally in Brownsville versus another city. So what happened to the project? As we began to develop the project, one of the things that was necessary was to subscribe the plan to other entities out in the state of Texas. At the time, there was a big gap. There was a big gap of the amount of available capacity and the load that was growing. There were predictions that the gap was going to be closing very rapidly with the growth throughout the entire state. So with these projects, you have to take off quite some time before the load shows up so that you don't run out of capacity and have to have rolling blackouts throughout the state. So you look at that project, decisions made based on that gap. But then what really tripped the project up, I believe, is the OPEC change in the price of oil, the barrel of oil, which dropped significantly. So when that oil, the price of oil dropped significantly, then the catalyst that was really making the state grow so rapidly at the time was the Eagle Ford shale development. And when you start to look at prices going down, drilling is being spent, decreased significantly. At the same time, we saw the acceleration of the deployment of renewables throughout the state. That was because they were announcing a decrease in the amount of years that people would be able to capture incentives to do wind projects and solar projects. So people accelerated to try to get ahead of the end of capturing those incentives to do those projects. Those projects rely heavily on incentives of the federal government, which are the energy credits. About a third of the project is funded by the government with those credits. The other third is accelerated depreciation. And the last component is something called a power purchase agreement. So they sell it to someone like ourselves and we end up paying one-third, really, the real cost of the project. So that said, if you remove the incentives, then those projects really can't make it and compete against the other generation options that you have in the marketplace. The supply versus demand gap was closing rapidly. And because these projects require the sale of the output of the plant, because you couldn't subscribe additional people to take the energy, the project then becomes an unfundable risk because no one wants to have a project that doesn't have an agreement, a contract for the full output of it. If you go to do a merchant facility, you'll end up with what happened at the same time period with Panda, who purchased the plant and immediately, within less than a year, had to end up filing for bankruptcy because they were strictly going to be playing the market, the energy market. That, the last thing that's not on there that we discussed yesterday was another, I think, another key to any project even today is that the marketplace does not have a capacity market. So that, what that says is it's a pure energy market. If you produce the energy and the price is set for that energy, it will clear at that price. There's no guaranteed revenue for you for having built something that helps to support the grid. So that capacity market does not exist in Texas. And although pricing can go up significantly, all the way up to $9,000 a megawatt hour, it can happen only for a few intervals during a year. And that's really not enough money for a project to make the payments that they have to be making. To cover a little bit on what goes into making a decision like this, we do follow kind of the, and the same thing the city does with their land use assumptions. Excuse me. We take that land use assumption and based on what your predictions are, how the city is going to grow, we throw that into what we call on our end, a load forecast. We take a look at each of the customer classes, residential, commercial, industrial, and we look at where the city is growing. We estimate what those future load growths are going to be. Typically, it's every five years and it looks out very closely at the five-year horizon. It does extend out to 10, 15, 20, and 25 years. But as you get further out, you know, you're really, the band of certainty is extremely large. So you're looking at five-year increments to try to make a decision because it takes some time to solicit, you know, capacity and then bring it into the region. That load forecast goes into our financial models and it kind of helps to predict what our revenue streams are going to be. But it also goes into something we call our Integrated Resource Plan. That Integrated Resource Plan integrates all of the existing assets that we have. We had Oakley Union as one of our assets. We have a wind farm out in Heveronville. We have Silas Ray here in Brownsville and we have part ownership in the Adago Energy Center off of Monte Cristo Road in the Upper Valley. So you look at those generation assets and you say, at least you know that that your price to generate is going to be at a set number. So it's like, you know, you look at your car, your car is either high efficiency, making 40 miles a gallon, or it's low efficiency, making 10 or 12 miles a gallon. These generation units do the very same thing. They look at how efficient they run off the energy that they use to generate the megawatts that we bring into the city. So we look at the different options that are out there in the marketplace, what's being developed at this point in time. It could be today is much more renewable than it was 10 or 15 years ago. So you're going to not find somebody who's building an 800-megawatt plant anywhere in the state of Texas today, simply because they're not fundable, they're not, you know, it's not an investment that a bank is going to make a loan to a developer on. So you have to start looking at power purchase agreements, doing solicitations out there to see what someone has to offer. It could be a combination of some gas supply, some renewable supply on the wind side or even on the solar side. So the market is changing significantly and so that's why you take a look at it at least every five years, unless something changes dramatically, like say we were to bring a very large load in here, 100 megawatts, 200 megawatts. You'd want to do a refresh of the load forecast and integrated resource plan because of that discrete customer information that you receive. So what's next for us here is that the city continues to grow, albeit it's at a lower growth rate than it was before, but it still continues to grow and that's a good thing. The fleet that we have of generation continues to age. That's not a good thing. So there will be another decision to be made going forward as we made a decision to shutter Oakley Union and it actually will be shutting down on September 30 of this year. So with that removal of that asset from our portfolio, we're looking at the first, the need for additional capacity to be midsummer of next year, of 2021. And from there on, it continues to grow. The shortage continues to grow as the city continues to grow. So we see that a load forecast refresh is in order and that will be presented to the board. Also, a refresh of the Integrated Resource Plan is needed as well to try to figure out what there is out there in the marketplace that we can either solicitate out for or to pursue that would help us to meet those shortfalls in capacity. Now, once that decision is made, depending on what that is, if it's a power purchase agreement and there's not a rate, excuse me, if we're not building something ourselves and we need to do a financing, typically those won't go to the city for approval. We'll still be talking to you about what those will be because we're agreed to meet with one another, which is a very good thing. But the decision will be taken to the board and then to the city. And the last thing that I have here is that with the project, the Nascar project, we still have a Cross Valley Pipeline right-of-way. And that comes in from near the, just north of the Adago Energy Center, which is on Monte Cristo Road, all the way down to where Southmost Regional Water Authority plant is. Roughly 50 miles of line right-of-way was acquired for the project. That remains an asset on our books. It can be a dual-purpose right-of-way. We can install a gas pipeline and/or a water line. That's how the permitting was done and the acquisition was done. So we'll have to try to figure out what we're going to do with that asset. The utility did set up a gas utility by charter. We were enabled to do that in the city and the board did that about that same time frame, about 2013, 14. And that's it. If you have some questions, I'd be glad to take some.
I have a couple of questions. So at the initial stages of the Tenaska project, did you ever have any consultants that y'all discussed a project with?
Yes, absolutely. Internally, we do, you know, identify the need. We have our own programs here that we use day in and day out. And they're much shorter-term type programs. But as we do a review going further out, we had the board ends up hiring an engineering firm, an outside engineering firm to do the load forecast and also to do the Integrated Resource Plan. The Integrated Resource Plan and the board makes a decision. Generally, there'll be another review to see how it affects rates and another consultant from the outside is hired to do that.
Okay, so did you have any consultants discourage you or tell you that this wasn't a good project to invest in?
I don't recall any that said it wasn't a good project. The project at that time, when you have the information you have in front of you to make a decision based on that, no, there was not.
Okay. The projection load forecast that you talk about, over the last five years, how did that play out? Was it on point? In other words, did it vary very much from what your forecast was as it actually played out?
It did vary and varied very quickly because the decision that was made by OPEC really shut down the Eagle Ford Shale pretty much in very short order.
Okay, as far as, say, the population needs and that side of it, not the fuel acquisition side, but when you were talking about the demographics, the requirement of additional power, how did that play out? Were you guys on point or did it vary a lot from what you had projected?
It varied significantly because we were no different than the remainder of the state. We also saw a decrease in our load growth percentages for the very same reasons. Energy drives a lot of different sectors of the business.
And then the population. Okay, so then when did you find out or did you determine that it had become like you mentioned under two, number four, that it was unfundable? When did you make that determination?
When did we make that determination? We did not make that determination. The project was not able to reach its funding decision because it did not have subscriptions to the remainder of the plant.
When did you find that out?
I don't recall the date.
Okay, if you would, please make a note to provide that date for us. And so my last question for this segment is, why did it take so long for you to abandon this project?
I don't know how to respond to you on that.
Well, then I'll ask you to think about that question and you can answer it in the future sometime.
Okay.
Mr. Science, this is Mayor Mendez. In regards to section four, where you're talking about what's next and the decision on the Cross Valley Pipeline, my understanding is at this point in time, you've only acquired the right-of-way. Do you have any idea how much it would cost to actually construct the pipeline?
At the time, we did estimates for the construction of a gas pipeline. It was in the over $100 million price tag. What we did at the same time was to secure taps into the Valley Crossing Pipeline, which is the Spectraline. And thereby, you know, we would be able to continue to pursue prospects that required gas in our community. Those are purchased and installed when the pipeline was being constructed. So it was over 100, 110 million. I think that's somewhere close, Leandro, on the construction cost for the pipeline.
Yes, that's correct.
Mayor, I suspect on that gas pipeline right-of-way that we pursued to get fruition, to get the right-of-way, that's a valuable piece of property for future, either future gas lines coming to the port from the Edinburgh area or from the Eagle Ford Shaled area. And also, it's got the, it crosses three counties. So in the event we wanted to put in a large D cell plant possibly someday at the port, we could serve three of the counties in the valley.
My understanding is 50 miles, right?
Yes.
Were there any other right-of-ways acquired during the Tenaska project? Other than that one, the Cross Valley?
Commissioner, if there were, they were for water lines. Maybe we started on a transmission line over by the port, but they were not big.
Would you please make a list of any other right-of-ways that you acquired during the Tenaska project?
Yeah. One of my, does come to mind, we did a reuse line from our North Wastewater Plant that goes to where Tenaska was going to be built. That goes right across the, right next to the industrial park, the GBIC Industrial Park. So a lot of that cost that was associated with that line won't go to waste because we actually had people wanting the effluent for that industrial park at various times. So that'll pay for itself when we get a load out there for that. But I'll get you a list of the other, if we did any other right-of-way acquisitions.
Yeah, right-of-ways or pipeline also?
No, no right-of-way, but yeah, we'll get you the pipeline cost.
Okay.
If I may, I've looked through the old minutes of the commission and what I was able to see was that the commission approved the creation of a gas utility, right? So the commission. utility, right? So the commission, um, the commission at that point created a gas utility and, and put P U B in charge of that gas utility. What I haven't, and I guess the creation of that gas utility, which we saw uh so far, there was acquisition of a right of way for that gas pipeline. That's kind of where it's at on the gas utility side. But what I can't figure out is when it went from a gas utility to then purchasing an interest in this power plant. I, I haven't been able to connect the dots on that. So if you could help me out.
The mayor, we, we uh, the board and commission chose at that time for P U B to supply the gas for the power line for the power plant and own the pipeline. Nas could flow the gas through it, but we would actually own it in charge of fee on it. And Tenaska was receptive to that of us owning the pipeline.
Right. On the, on the gas utility side, but I haven't seen any, or I haven't seen any sort of city commission action in regards to um the actual power plant or any sort of interest in Tenaska itself. Uh, I may be missing some. I don't know if that was a city commission uh decision or if that was a P U B decision. I haven't been.
Well, yeah, the decision to create the gas utility was for Tenaska.
I, I understand that and, and the gas utility obviously was a city decision, which there's minutes to reflect that.
Yes.
But what I don't see is where the decision was made to, to actually acquire an interest in Tenaska itself. Was that a P U B decision?
No, that was commissioned.
Okay, I, I.
That would have been a twenty twelve timeframe.
Okay. Cause there was no reference to Tenaska in the initial uh creation.
Yeah, we, we, we had to go to the commission to get approval to go into that thing.
Okay.
For two hundred million dollars, we.
If anybody can point to that, I'd like to at least just see it just for my own benefit.
And that's where the rates came in.
Right. I saw that. Yeah. The rate, the rate increases. Absolutely. I saw that, but I just didn't see where the interest was being purchased. But um, because I didn't see that in any minutes, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, I, we, we can run that, but it was in that twenty twelve frame.
If I can, if anybody can give me that.
Yeah, we'll run it down.
Thanks, guys.
This, this is Leandro. Um, to, to one of the questions on Commissioner Nies, on when P U B uh decided to, to, to suspend or to, to uh start winding down. We, we did um provide a document entitled, uh, Tenaska Brownsville Generation Project from concept to current state. And on page three, the second paragraph, um, it does reference December twenty seventeen. It's when P U B ended the indefinite suspension, uh thereby resetting the schedules of the milestones. So that, that data is, is, is available uh to answer your question.
Okay. Is that the date that that we decided to have, there was a letter that needed to be sent to Tenaska in order to initiate the termination of the project, as I remember it being discussed at one of the meetings. Now, my recollection is that we authorized the city manager to advise uh Mr. Brusiac that yes, send the letter and go ahead and initiate the termination. So one of the big mysteries to me is I kind of found out not through official channels that the Tenaska project had been terminated. And then that would, that raised a lot of other questions, which is how we got here today. So is that what you're talking about when, when we decided to send the letter to initiate the termination of the contract?
That, that, that what it did was reset the schedule to, to definitely um, to some definite milestones that had to play out through, through that year, through, through November, December.
Yes.
Uh, because there are some, some timelines for, for scheduling the, the financing of the project. So, yeah.
Yes.
We do have Mr. Davidson that can talk about that a little bit more. Uh, but yes, I believe there was a letter.
From, from what I recall, I think I saw that the, the actual official termination was earlier this year. Am I right?
The, the, the final was in uh this year, February of, of twenty twenty. The final letter, but there was an initial letter that had to set a timeframe in motion from what I recall. Even prior to uh Mayor Mendez and this other current board coming on, I think there was, it was just before that maybe, but there was a trigger, I remember that was discussed that required us to send a letter and we finally said, yes, go ahead and send it and let's terminate the contract. And I think we came out and voted in uh open session to terminate the contract. And that's what gave the authority to send the letter. I, I could be off, but I'm trying to recall all this. So, but my question.
Let me correct something. The, 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 the actual letter was in nineteen. Um, because that was the year that we actually considered the abandonment official and we wrote off some costs on September tw- thirtieth, twenty nineteen. So it was last year, but the, the step to get to that place in February nineteen started in December of seventeen, which actually took us, took us through, through November of eighteen uh on some key dates and, and that's what came to, to, to final in, in February twenty nineteen.
Well, yeah. So, so, but my question doesn't have to do necessarily with that. It has to do with why did we wait so long if we knew that this was an unfundable project or it was not feasible to, to do all these things? I know there was discussions, but the, the other side of this is that how were we supposed to ever know that it was completed? Well, did y'all give us notice somewhere? Because I haven't been able to come across it. Were we notified of, of the final? But I was going to actually wait till the end of the presentation to go into this. So I'm going to hold off on these questions for now. So y'all can continue with your presentation.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Write them down.
Um, I think this might go towards uh Ben's question. When I remember that the, the last joint meeting between the City of Brownsville and P U B, at that point Ben was running for election. So that would have been with spring of two thousand seventeen. And I remember this because you showed up to the meeting in the audience wearing a T-shirt saying like an anti um Tenaska. But at that meeting, it would have been, I remember Cesar and Rick, but the most clear thing I remember is Rick, my predecessor, Rick Longoria, directly told um Eddie Trevino, who's now county judge, but at that point was um P U B's attorney. After explaining the situation and stuff, he said, I want out. So it would have, the initial process of getting out of that would have probably started at that point, which was even before Ben was elected. And like they said, then it, you had to come up with the way to get out and meet these times, timelines. So I can confidently say that this, the process of getting out of, of Tenaska would have started at minimum um at earliest would have been spring of two thousand seventeen. If that helps.
That helps me. Um, and, and that's a good timeframe to work from. Uh, so I appreciate that clarification.
I have something to say. I hope I can have a few minutes. And I hope I don't offend anybody and only bring clarity with what I'm about to say. So I don't know if Dr. Gowen is here, but if she's here, then her and I would have been the only city commissioners who have had the fortune or misfortune, however you want to see it, to deal with this from the beginning. And I can tell you that I sat through a three hour meeting at the Quetzal Building when this was first presented. And the one thing I took away was it's a thirty-three percent rate increase, but you're gonna benefit from it in the long run. And this was the year, I believe it was twenty twelve, maybe twenty eleven. We had just come out of a recession. A lot of people in this city lost their homes to the situations and circumstances that were not that were not their fault. And uh sorry, my phone rang and I just got completely distracted. I remember during that meeting walking out and being so upset that my utility company was coming to me with this proposition, this gamble. Maybe it's going to work. Maybe it's not going to work. I also remember seeing the companies that would leave because they were not able to find the electrical power that they needed to run these big companies out at the port. So I understood that and I understand why you all put yourselves in that position. The next thing I knew, it was going to be brought to the commission and I remember we had a mayor that was so forceful and direct with me and it was even said, I'm sorry that you don't have long-term vision for projects like this because I think I was like twenty seven years old. And let's be honest, what knowledge did I have of these power plants? Really, I was twenty seven years old and had no idea what was going on or what you all were bringing to me without doing extensive research. Then following the rates started going up, people started complaining about their light bills. People were having their electricity turning off. As a business owner, as a car wash owner, I saw my bill go up thirty percent and it nearly devastated my business in the winter. So to make a long story short, I then would ask the city manager, what's going on? What's the status? We would get together as commissioners and we needed answers. And there was never any transparency from the beginning. You cannot see the contract. It's between P U B and you're not, you're not allowed to know what's going on. It's out of your, it's out of your control. It's out of your pay grade. That's not you. Then we would have executive sessions. I remember sitting through an executive session with a man from Tenaska with a watch that probably cost better than my house. And I walked out of there knowing and telling other commissioners, this is never going to come. What did we get ourselves into? What is going on? And at that point, we wanted to stop. Fast forward to what Commissioner Golanski is saying, two more years. We had, it almost felt like going to a Western shootout, walking into there with people in the hallway so angry, wanting answers. Yes, Commissioner Nies with a T-shirt, anti-Tenaska, whatnot going on. That's not the way a city and a municipally owned power company should be doing business. We shouldn't have customers in the blind. We shouldn't have commission members in the blind. And I just hope that in the future when we make decisions like this, during those times, we were being labeled as one of the most poorest cities in the entire nation and bringing a thirty-three percent rate increase to our ratepayers. I just wish that our city would be more considerate of the people who make the city go around. And that's my piece. I'm sorry if I offended everybody. I know and I support P U B. I love what you guys do and I love that we have such a strong utility company. But this one deal really, really has been a thorn in my side and something that angers me that it was done incorrectly. It was done without transparency and the people deserve an answer and I feel like the people deserve a refund for what they had to suffer to get nothing in return for. Sorry. I'm done.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Hi, this is Ms. Oakwin. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. So thank you. Thank you, everyone, for everything that you've said, but I think I'd like to bring everybody back to the focus of why we're having this meeting today. I think it's unfair to the current board as to what happened. Uh, I, I think it's fair that we do bring light and that's the whole purpose of the meeting today. But I also like to uh bring the focus back to how can we move forward? How can we improve Brownsville? How can we uh take this money, the twenty-nine million dollars that we have and put it back to work in our community together?
I appreciate your, your thoughts, uh, Madam Chair. I think part of, of knowing where we're going to go is knowing where we came from. So having the historical perspective, I think at least helps, at least from the commit, one commissioner that was here at that point in time and, and the individuals that were involved. So I appreciate the historical perspective from Commissioner Tetro as well as Commissioner Golanski and, and uh Mr. Brusiac and Mr. Science and Mr. Garcia so far. So with that, can we proceed, gentlemen?
So, so this is Leandro. So if we can go back one slide. Okay. So just like Fernando did, uh, we tried to, to summarize as, as brief as possible in one page, a, a good overview for, for the commission to, to get a good feel for, for the money side. And this section three talks about the Tenaska rates. So um, yes, the, the rates were approved in, in two thousand and twelve, December. And there were a total of thirty-six percent was the overall rate increase, of which fourteen percent was for growth. And you'll see there the, the growth rates and twenty-two percent were for the Tenaska. Now, we did anticipate to, to generate um monies from the Tenaska rates uh to be able to sustain debt service on us borrowing two hundred million plus for the, for our share of the two hundred megawatts of, of the eight hundred megawatt plant. We also had in the pro forma um revenues from off system sales. So combined with the projected off system sales and the, and the rate revenues on the Tenaska rate, it, it's what was going to cover the debt and then the coverage uh required by bond owners on that debt. So uh all the rate increases um came into play, you know, every year, the first one April thirteenth and October first, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. So once all the rates were in place, the Tenaska um increases uh generated thirteen point seven million, thirteen million, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight, nineteen. The um the um, the uh, the, the, the other revenues from the growth rates also generated about eleven million uh a year recurring, once they were all in place. Overall, through the end of this fiscal year, because I'm estimating through September, we will have generated eighty-three million, five hundred and seventy-three thousand, nineteen dollars from the Tenaska rates. And then another fifty-eight million, hundred and forty thousand, nine forty-four from the growth rates. Now, where has this money gone is, is, is a question that we want to answer today. Is the eighty-three million has supported an initial plan that started in, in fiscal year fourteen and continued in fifteen and sixteen to set aside um, uh some monies to serve as payment of interest during construction. So we, we recognize that we're going to issue two hundred million for the plant and we recognize it was going to take a, a couple of.
Just froze.
We came here.
Okay, Mr. Garcia's uh computer froze.
Its power went out.
He must not be in Brownsville then, because I know P U B would have had that up and running real quick. All right. Um, is anybody, are we going to try and get in touch with Mr. Garcia or is, can anybody over the presentation, Fernando?
Yeah, I just sent him a text to tell him he cut out. I don't know if he's still talking in the background.
Probably, you know, give him a second here to log back on, probably.
Sure, sure. Is Leandro the only one that was going to discuss this uh portion?
Yeah, I think he doesn't get on for not knowing. I can walk it through it, probably. Give him a second here to.
Sure. I was going to say, if for some reason he does it and, and one of you two do go forward, I think it's important to kind of really talk about the differences in, in these funds, like the equity fund and the fuel cost and just go into a little bit of detail, just lame in terms as far as what it is that they're for and how they're used. Cause that can be really confusing. It took me a couple of times going through it to really understand it.
Yeah. And I think, I mean, Fernando, I'll start and correct me if I'm off, but you know, we collected that, as he was starting to say, we collected the twenty-nine million to set aside for the equity fund. And what that was going to use is he was saying we were, we were going to finance two hundred million. And that was going to be interest during construction and, and any closing costs associated with the actual purchase of the share of the plant. So that money was put aside. So when the project was going to close in twenty sixteen, we had the funding available to, to, to make sure we could close. Okay. Fernando, do you want to add anything to that or?
It, uh, the, the thought then was that this interest during construction should, should not have been part of the.
Can you hear me? We can hear you, Leandro. We can't see you, but we can hear you. That's good enough for now.
Hello?
You there?
I can't, I can't hear you. I got kicked out of the network. Hang on.
We can hear you.
So I guess if we have questions, we'll, we'll need to text them to him or, or hopefully he'll be able to. So I guess if we have questions, we'll, we'll need to text them to him or, or hopefully he'll be able to, to listen in.
Thought he, thought he almost got back on.
As far as the, uh, the funding or the financing, when you're talking about it closing. Um, was it gonna be financed through an agency or an entity? Or is this gonna be self-funded at that point in time in two thousand and sixteen when you're talking about it closing?
I'm back, John. I can answer that question. Uh, we were gonna issue bonds, uh, two hundred million and, and that's why we needed the, the debt service coverage. Covering the debt service and then coverage for the bond ordinance. So we did contemplate the issuing bonds.
Perfect. Okay, thanks, Leandro.
I apologize.
Not a problem. We can hear you now, so you can, you can go ahead. I don't know if you can, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the network kicked me out, so for some reason I'll get on I T. Uh, so, so this, this shows that, that the cumulative um, monies from revenues from the rate from Tenaska is eighty-three million, uh, five seventy-three and nineteen. And then, uh, do you still hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry. And, and then, uh, and then what, what we did is that twenty-nine million that was set aside. Then we started in April of sixteen, redirecting those resources. Recognizing, we had some board members that really recognized that the customers were, were, were carrying a burden of a higher bill. And, and we had some board members that, that were proactive and wanted to, to make sure that the, the elderly got some relief and just all customers. So what we began in, in April sixteen was a bill reduction plan. Where we actually took, you know, those revenues and then some of P V surplus to target a competitive bill of a hundred and two dollars uh, for the residential average customer that uses a thousand K W H. So that, in April sixteen, that dropped the bill significantly. What we did, you know, by doing the buy down on the fuel and purchase energy cost. We, we kind of mitigated some of those increases to, to the, as a result of the rate increase. So um, there are three components to, to the average bill residential. That's a customer service charge, that's a base energy uh, charge, which are the rate increases that, that were enacted, and then the fuel and purchase energy. The fuel and purchase energy charge, we uh, at P V have the flexibility to adjust that monthly so that we can promptly recover the cost of, of, of fuel and purchased power. So that is in, in, in the rate ordinance, you know, we, we have the flexibility to monthly do that. And, and prior to, to April sixteen, we were mitigating some of the spikes, but nonetheless, we're still having to to um, recover uh, those fuel costs from the customers. And in some cases, it was taking us to, to a rate of about four and a half or five cents or six cents per K W H for kilowatt hour. What we did to get an average bill of one oh two, it, it required us to set the, the fuel factor at two point nine five two cents. And, and that rate has been in place ever since. Uh, we have used the hundred and two million, six twenty-five to, to mitigate the, the fuel factor. So as an example, if, if our average annual cost for fuel and purchase energy is sixty million, we've been using about twenty million. Uh, so that twenty million has not been a burden to the customer now. Uh, we're recovering forty million. So what we try to do is to offset the increasing bill. And, and yes, it went up to, to a hundred and ten dollars and it was gonna go up even higher without that fuel mitigation. So um, uh, that's what we've been doing since. And the next, the next slide, uh, if you can go to the next slide. Can we go to the next slide? This slide shows how compares the, the actual uh, fuel factor that's been in place since October of sixteen at two nine five two. And what we would have recovered, uh, had we not started doing that. And it would have been a, a super high bill. Get, you know, we, we got that. And the board was, was very conscientious of, of the high bill. So every, every penny equates to a dollar, I mean to ten dollars. So at twenty-nine, at two point nine five two cents, that's twenty-nine dollars. If we go to, to five cents, that's fifty dollars. That adds another twenty dollars. So, so it is significant um, to the customers on how we manage the fuel factor. The, the thing that we wanted to achieve was to give this relief to every customer. Whether your commercial business or industrial or residential customer. Every customer pays the, the same fuel factor. So A B I S D pays two nine five two uh, per K W H and, and so do residential customers. So that provided big savings to, to some of these customers. So that kinda wanted, we wanted to give you just a, a general overview. We did pre- uh, prepare a supplement package that gives a little bit more chronologically, you know, in a chronological manner that, the, the, the rates, how they came into play. And then as well as provide some information on how the bills increased uh, from the first rate increase to the, through the fifth. And then uh, what, what it has meant also to the city. And we also provide some information on the pre-development cost that P U B had to um, uh, was obligated to, to, to expand because of the contractual obligation with Tenaska. So there's a lot more detailed information on, on the package. We call the supplemental information package dated today. So um, we, we can, and, and then we can provide even more details if, if the commission desires. So I'll, I'll stop there um, and, and see if there's any questions on the rates or the Tenaska rates or the fuel factor.
I have a few questions. Speak, if you can go back to a, a slide. All right. So you have highlighted there the Tenaska rate revenues and Tenaska equity fund. Which you claimed was supposed to be used to help with the financing. So i- is it, are we to understand that that twenty-nine million is in an account somewhere being s- saved?
That, that twenty-nine million is in what we call our capital improvement fund. And, and that's the last bucket in the flow of funds. We have it, you know, identified earmarked as twenty-nine million. It's been obligated since we started in fourteen. Uh, last summer, we, we took it to the board to just be obligated, uh, so we could start considering options for uses. So it is, it is within our capital improvement fund, but earmarked at this point separated.
You went last summer
Cash in the bank.
Last summer, you went to your board and you got authority to take uh, unearmarked it, like you said, for use with Tenaska and put it into the capital improvement fund. Is that what you're saying?
It, it's always been in, in the, in the fund. It was just
Okay, de-allocated. Okay, so
Be obligated to.
Who, in your opinion, has the authority over the equity fund account?
That, that is a, that is a legal question, but to, to answer that question, we have to revisit the, the bond ordinance. Because the bond ordinance prescribes the, the flow of funds and the fact that these monies are in the capital improvement fund. And they are the, the last bucket flow of funds. So we, we have, we have that flow of funds in order to meet investor expectations of how they get treated in their debt service and then in the tier of uses of, of gross revenues.
Okay, well, I think so. The question here is, what's gonna happen with those twenty-nine million? Now, you apparently have another thing at the end of this program to utilize some of it for the L E D program. And you have another plan supposedly, from what I understand, to buy furniture and equipment at your new building out of this fund. So it seems to me that you, P U B, think that y'all have authority over the use of those funds to the exclusion of us, the C F, City of Brownsville, being able to do anything. Because this is the first we hear about most of this stuff, including the report that y'all filed or provided after lunch for a meeting today at five, which is very extensive. And it's gonna take a lot of going over, right? So that's why I'm asking this question. Who has authority over the use of those funds?
I, I believe that's why the, the, the chair wants to have this discussion and, and, and the benefit of everybody's input into this, into this discussion. Um, we, we can to, to lay out the, the basis for a decision. Uh, go over the bond ordinance provisions uh, that follow uh, the, the, the rate section. Uh, and, and by the way, the, the, the first project, the streetlights is, is still on the list. The second one is, is not on the list anymore, so we can disregard uh, the, the furniture.
Well, it's good to know that, that it was on a list, because I'd like to know what else is on your list, uh, that you've made plans for this funds. So I, I got a couple of other questions here.
Commissioner, let me ask something really quick. I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Garcia, you may, you make reference to a bond, some bond language, a bond ordinance. Um, and I've seen that in, I don't know whether that's gonna be in, in a later part of your presentation where you're talking about how the use of the funds can go. Uh, I know that there's been reference to bond ordinance language on, on how funds can be used. But um, and again, I'm sorry for a question that, that I maybe should know the answer to or that maybe you provided to me. But um, was it, there, there never actually was a bond issued though, was there? We never got that.
No, but, no, but one, one of the things that, that obligate these monies is that for the bond ordinance, everything is gross revenues. That's, that's the way, everything is gross revenues and falls in the definition and these base revenues are gross revenues. There's only a, a handful of things that don't follow the flow of funds. That's impact fees, water rights, meter deposit and grants. Every dollar we get, you know, not coming from those sources, is gross revenues and is subject to the, the bond ordinance, the flow of funds. So, so this definitely qualifies these revenues.
When you make reference to bond ordinance language, what bond ordinance was that? I'm sorry.
We, we, we established a master bond ordinance in two thousand and five. So with that master bond ordinance, uh, that's when we established the, a new way of, of doing the city transfer. Uh, uh, you know, very transparent, ten percent with usage. Uh, and that has been the bond ordinance in place uh, ever since, because we've had investors uh, invest in our bonds and we have to carry that bond ordinance, uh, those provisions, those covenants.
Are you talking about P U B or C O B? When you say
That's the city. The city, the city of When I say we, I mean, the, the city of Brownsville and P U B, you know, compared to the investors, so.
Yes.
I'm sorry, during that meeting, that was like a showdown that we had the huge executive session on the fourth floor of City Hall. I remember very distinctly asking if we could use it for a project like drainage or something like that. And I was told no, because the money was paid in by ratepayers. So the money had to be used for something very specific to ratepayers. Is that correct information or was that false information that I was given?
That, that, that we would, we, we view the, the, what that qualifies as a system, as a system project. And, and that's, that's a provision I was gonna go into here. Because there are, there are ways, there are ways to, to fund a project that's not electric or sewer. But that project would have to be, you know, according to state statute, made part of the combined system. So, so there are ways to bring in enterprises, like we did the gas utility by ordinance and in accordance with state statutes. So we would, we would need to, to accommodate the drainage, for example, in that manner.
And the reason I was asking, the reason I was asking about the language, Mr. Garcia, was I was just trying to see whether we're limited in some way um, on the use of funds going forward, right? So I know you made reference to language, uh, possibly limiting language in some bond ordinance. So that's why I was asking, just to clarify so that we know just exactly how we can use it or if there's any sort of prohibitions going forward, but thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, I think it's in the next couple of slides.
Thank you, John.
On the use of that.
We can go to the next. So Mayor, we, we've, we've really tried hard to, to get as, as clear guidance from bond council on this, on what we can and can't do. Um, and, and will continue, depending on what alternatives, uh, the, the commission, the board wanna consider. We can go to the next slide. So, so here, I mentioned that the capital improvement fund is, is the final bucket um, in, in the, in the tier of, of flows. And that's where all the surfaces end up. And, and we fund C I P out of this, we fund, we can allocate monies to the fuel subaccount. So, so it, it does, you know, say here what it can be used for. Capital improvements to the system, contingencies, operations, maintenance, or replacement of properties, et cetera. And then it provides a definition of what the system is. So, so we, we can, we can put to the test any projects that, that the commission wants to consider and then seek uh, bond council guidance. And, and we can uh, touch base with our bond council already, as well as the city's bond council. If, if we wanna, you know, have, you know, both parties come, come to an agreement. But um, uh, we, we we, we, we do seek guidance and as long as it's something a lot like state statute that permits a utility accounters to, to accommodate as part of the system, then, then the projects, I guess as general rule, could be eligible for funding.
Mr. Garcia, this is Ms. Oakwin. So I have a question. I know, I don't know if it's in your presentation, but um, I know that on the chart, a couple charts back, on the slide you showed um, how we have uh, maintained the rates from, um, I wanna say two thousand and seventeen, if I'm correct. And what would happen if we uh, depleted twenty-nine mil, twenty-nine million dollars uh, for whatever it is that we decide and agreed on that we need to um, use it for the community? How would that affect the rate going forward?
If the use of the twenty-nine doesn't have an impact on, on the bill reduction plan. What does have an impact if, if we start considering rollbacks. Um, because the, 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 the money that the Tenaska rates are generating, that thirteen point seven million was another uh, other monies and circles that we put in, we're using about twenty, twenty-two million a year to, to supplement the fuel factor or to, 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 to lower the recovery of, of fuel and purchase energy from the customers. So it's when we start losing that revenue stream that, that, you know, affects our ability to keep that plan in place. So in the supplement, uh, we do provide some examples of a bill with the current rates at a fuel factor of four point eight cents, which is the average, at five cents or six cents. Because we have seen requirement, requirements for recovery, even up to seven cents or seven and a half cents. So um, you, you, you lose, you don't get a one-for-one benefit on a rollback reduction and, and um, and, and, and the use of the, of the fuel factor, cuz that goes away, the revenue stream goes away. So the use of the twenty-nine doesn't have any immediate impact on our, on our bill reduction plan. It's, it's already money set aside, we can use it. It's, it's when we start talking about the rollback. Uh, and we provide some examples of a rollback at, at seven percent, at fifteen percent or even twenty-two percent. The twenty-two percent rollback would take out all of the Tenaska rates. And, and um, you know, and, and we show how much money would be lost. If to, to the city, at the ten percent loss, as well as to the ability to, to mitigate the fuel factor. So it's, it's a, it's a, it's a tough situation we're in. And, and we started it in April sixteen for, for, with the objective of giving the customer relief. But um, we'll have to eventually find a solution to this.
I'm trying to find out the relationship between the rate, including what is now the Tenaska rate and the fuel subsidy. You know, so shouldn't the rate itself be enough to cover the cost and keep the, the rates at a manageable like one hundred and two dollars, as you mentioned? Why do you have to, and I'm just, I'm very curious about, why do you have to have this fuel subsidy system when shouldn't the rates just cover it?
That, that, that the fuel and purchase energy requirements are not in the base rates. They are recoverable separately. Uh, so for, for every dollar we, we spend in fuel and person energy, we recover a dollar from the customer, from all customers. So what we're doing right now is we're recovering uh, uh, twenty percent less or twenty-five percent less from the customer. So the fuel and purchase energy will continue the requirement at sixty million a year, whether we have base rates go up or down. Um, so if, if they go down, we just don't have that money to, to mitigate the fuel factor. So, so the, the important question is the fuel, payment for fuel and purchase energy are not in the base rate. They're recoverable separately by a fuel factor. If that makes sense.
Well, while we're, uh, I'm just noticing, Mayor, that, and I don't know how you wanna handle this, but apparently there are some questions and answers that are a, uh, able to be asked. And there's some comments in the chats with some uh, pretty, or I guess valid questions.
Right, I saw that, Commissioner, and, and um, City Secretary Right, I saw that, Commissioner, and and City Secretary responded to that because it's not a public hearing. Okay, all right, those, but, yeah, I saw that as well.
So so we try to emphasize the the capital improvement fund as the final bucket, and we try to emphasize the meaning of the system so that we can come to to some understanding of what what's eligible, what type of project would be eligible. And we can, we can seek further guidance if there's a project that's of interest for clarification from bond council or or D T R G. Mr. Davidson's on the line, but usually bond council that that applies to anything in the bond ordinance.
I would hope that maybe the ratepayers can be involved in the decision, or, I mean, that's just from my experience, because they're the ones that paid it and have had to put up with this for so long. So I would hope that maybe we could have input from the community ratepayers that poured their hard-earned money, paid with blood, to put this money in that fund.
And considering that the cost for the fuel went down during all this, which is part of why the 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 whole project went down. So I guess somebody needs to look at those numbers, but Mayor, may I ask a couple more questions?
Yes, Commissioner, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, so prior to this meeting today, did P U B officially notify the city of Brownsville of the, and these are just basically yes and no questions, all right? Did they officially notify the city of Brownsville of the termination of the Tanaska project? That's one. Anybody? Okay, well, then we can get these answers later, I guess. But number two question, did anybody officially advise the city of the status of the equity funds being the twenty-nine million? Okay, so nobody's going to volunteer an answer. The third.
I don't think, I don't think we have advised the the city, honestly, on the twenty-nine million. Only because we 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 kept it earmarked up through last September, and it became available.
And did anybody notify the the city officially of any of these expenditures which were turned over today, other than today? Previously, had any of these expenditures been disclosed to the city?
The the expenditures, there's there's two sets, what we use to our fuel account or pre-development costs. We haven't talked about pre-development costs.
You gave us a a package today that you had tried to or intended to keep it confidential, which I guess our council explained that it wasn't. So those figures in there, had they previously been provided to the city officially?
Exhibit B, it's entitled Texas, I mean, Tanaska Brownsville generation summary of expenses. Those were the pre-development calls for all the projects and obligations P U B had, and and the answer is is no.
Okay, so there's other expenditures as well, probably, that have not been disclosed. Is that right?
The city commission, that's correct.
Okay, now, I understand, and something that hasn't been disclosed here today in this meeting is that there was a nine point three million dollar write-off that was that previously disclosed to the city in an official capacity or officially?
The answer to that is is the best my knowledge, no.
Okay, also, as to these intended uses of the funds in their list, including which, well, and in particular, the L E D lights. Prior to date, was it disclosed to the city manager where the funds would come from for your participation in that Brownsville Energy Conservation Plan that we passed?
I think we we mentioned the 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 source being surplus monies and and cash, and not necessarily issuing debt for this, which is what we were trying to 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 help the city out, because the city contemplated at one time issuing certificates of participation or some financing through a through a a contract, performance contract. So so I'm not sure if we actually identified it as a Tanaska equity, but but we offered to do it within the five years from from available cash at P U B surplus.
So after reviewing, you know, as the best I could, your exhibit B, I noticed that there are some some lines that are a little bit, there's some large expenditures, I'll put it that way, but they don't break it down well enough. So my next question is, can you give us more details?
We can sort this in different manners. What what we have internally as a as an ongoing report is is by vendor. So it's by project by vendor is what we provided to you.
So the vendor should provide an invoice for the services provided, right? And and they should spell out what they spent, what you spent, what they charged you for. Right?
Yes.
Okay, so well, my last question for for now is, will you, P U B, cooperate with our city auditor in providing information to him that he requests from you?
I'll probably need guidance from 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 the board on that and and legal counsel, but we we can do it if
Yeah, this is Ms. O'Quinn. So, Mr. Neese, thank you for all those questions. Being the first-year chair and trying to get caught up with all this, as most of us are, especially on the Tanaska and the list of questions that you've requested, I will read over our P U B bylaws. And I know I haven't seen the city ones, but if there's something that we, I mean, I think, John, because as a chair, I don't think I submit anything to the city. But that's why we have Mr. Davidson, and these are all really great questions. But I was not aware that we needed to submit this monthly or quarterly. And I think this is why we requested this joint meeting, so that we can work together going forward.
I appreciate that, and I would just mention, I think it's in the charter that there should be at least quarterly meetings. And I don't know when they might have stopped or why, but I encourage that, and I appreciate you.
Thank you for that. And as a first-time chair, like I said, I think we had it to have a meeting in March, if I'm not mistaken, but we all know what happened, and that's why we felt that it was, we don't see this thing changing, and we said, hey, we need to have a meeting. And it's just, this is the only way that we're going to work together to, you know, make improvements to the city and have open communication. So I appreciate all the questions.
Yes, to the longest line. Thank you, Madam Karen. Commissioner Neese, I know you want some more itemized detail on some of these expenses that P U B has has given us today. I'd suggest, based on on the city meeting we had recently, that that you can probably just go through our city manager to make those inquiries. Now that you have some more information today, now you know kind of what to ask for as far as itemization.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep, thank you.
Hi, this is John Cowan. I'd just like to add a couple, couple of things. Yeah, just first, I'd like to thank everyone for for agreeing to meet. I think this is a great, a great thing, and I I, as you can see, our commission greatly believes in transparency, and I think the public as well needs to hear from from everybody. You know, all our people to know what's going on and and why they're being impacted, right? You know, as far as Tanaska, on everyone's bill, I know as a business owner, if I get a bill for something that I never got.
Commissioner Cowan, you sound a little muffled, I'm sorry.
Yeah, can you hear me? Yeah, as I, you know, I was saying, as a business owner, if I if I receive a bill for something that I never paid for, or I never got, I never received, then I I really, I don't want to pay that bill, right? And so I think we need to really look at adjusting the rates to reflect exactly what's going on. So I it's just, it's confusing. It, I think it's misleading the way P U B is billing.
Muffled again, John.
I'm sorry.
Unplug your mic.
It's probably the case. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I was just saying, it's 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 frustrating as a as a business owner and as a as a residential taxpayer. You know, paying a bill for something I never received. And I think we need to relook at the way we we have our rates presented to to all the customers and to be more transparent, and and really, it needs to represent what's really happening. I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes.
Here, here.
Thank you. Wholeheartedly.
And and then in in terms of the twenty-nine million, I think all the options need to be considered, including a potential refund to the to the ratepayers. But we need to see all all the options and what what the costs are for all the projects that are on the table and kind of see what what the best path, best path for kind of looks like. And and I I really believe the commission needs to to have input here.
Thanks, Commissioner. I agree with, I agree with what you said, especially on the rates, but I think here, coming up on on a couple of these slides, we're going to get to see some of the proposed uses of the funding, and and that'll be a chance for us maybe to have some input, or at least discuss some of those things that are that are being mentioned and and obviously, no decision is going to be made today, so they'll hear our input loud and clear today.
Can we go to the next slide? So so what you're looking at here is just a sample list of of projects that, you know, we we would probably want the the board or the commission to consider. And it's not all-inclusive. Number seventeen, of course, says other system improvements permitted by bond ordinance provisions on the use of capital improvement funds. So like like we mentioned earlier, we we had thought about funding number eight, streetlights, conversions to LEDs from this fund, but we we can consider other projects.
Yeah, and again, that was just a sample list to identify projects that that were eligible. It's not ones we're recommending. There is the sample list to start the dialogue between the city.
I would like to ask you all to, or the commission and the board, to consider tackling this digital divide problem that we have here, especially with this upcoming school year. There may be something to kickstart this, that we're already starting in the city with the the I S D, so that would be a worthy project. I'll throw out there.
Commissioner Neese, are you saying that for the twenty-nine million?
Yes, sir, because it's, it would be, it could be come come under utilities of some sort. So and we just passed a franchise ordinance. So we tie in the franchise ordinance with the utilities and maybe some of this money, but I'm not trying to hog the twenty-nine million here. I'm just throwing that out because it is a serious problem that we're seeing because of this COVID situation. And so the the kids need to to have that digital divide gap closed.
That that's why we're here today to get input from the council and and work together on this. We're not.
John, like I, like I mentioned at the P U B meeting yesterday, I mean, when when this rate increase was initiated, you were looking towards the future and trying to to maintain some sort of benefit to the to the P U B customer, trying to ensure that you're going to be able to keep rates where they were, at least trying to minimize the risk on increased rates and building infrastructure going forward. So I I think any sort of investment for the future with this money that's left needs to be something that that's an investment for for the P U B customer, for the Brownsville citizen, something that's going to pay dividends going forward, whether that's broadband, whether that means infrastructure improvement, something that's going to get a return on the investment, right? So your initial thoughts and your initial dialogue on this was, hey, let's invest in this because it's going to bring us a return, or it's going to be an investment going forward. I think the same sort of ideology needs to apply with the money that's remaining, and at least how this money gets used in the future is you got to make sure you get a return, use it wisely, use it for something that's going to either offset costs to to customers in the future, or something that's going to bring a benefit to our community that that we wouldn't otherwise have.
Thank you, Mayor, and I think as in yesterday's meeting, we both discussed that that's definitely the goal. And I feel really confident, just listening to the commissioners, and I feel confident in the P U B board that we're going to make the right decisions. We're going to look at the pros and the cons of anything that gets put on the table, because definitely we want to make sure that we make the best decision for our community. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming here and subjecting yourself to our our fire. But these are things, I mean, I'm sure it's both ways. You all want to be transparent with us, and we need to be transparent with our constituents. And that's just the whole objective of this entire commission. We strive and thrive with transparency and accountability, and this is just one of those projects. By those rules, and we need to air everything out and figure out the best solution going forward, and never, ever mistake again. But thank you.
One question I I would have, Mayor, if I may.
Yes, absolutely.
Is how how can we coordinate moving forward? Just through John and and the same manager, or would a committee be in order? Or how do you envision the collection and the filtering of?
Committee might not be a bad idea, but if we, if there's any, for now, I think the best approach certainly is is through Mr. Bruziak as general manager and Mr. Bernal as as our city manager. I think the having them, the CEOs, communicate for now is the best approach until we have a city commission meeting to maybe discuss how we want to, how we want to have those discussions going forward, whether that means a committee or or something else. We have to discuss it, I think, but for now, I think CEO of CEO is the best approach.
And I feel that the P U B customers eventually do need to be involved because it's their money.
And I I think we're going to have to discuss how that may occur, Commissioner. I don't know what sort of mechanism may need to occur, if that is a consideration. But obviously, they, I mean, they also elect us to represent them, so I think we are the representatives at at the very least, but we can discuss that as well, whether there needs to be any sort of mechanism for that.
Mayor, I know the, Mr. Bernal and them have some slides after we're finished. We've we've kind of finished everything. We wanted to at least lay out first, you know, shot, lay on the table here, so.
What, John, one thing I'd like to maybe have you all look at is future, future energy, right? The the future of energy, where it's going, where the market's going, whether that means wind, solar, anything else, microgrids, other things like that. I think you just need to kind of think about that and and how you may, how P U B may be investing in that going forward and what the return on that would be, right? I mean, that just goes to future planning, and that's something we can probably discuss as well as far as use, but I think that has to come into the conversation.
Yeah, and I, we did talk last night, and Fernando talked about the integrated resource plan and the load use being finished that we're going to bring to our board, certainly will bring it to the commission as well. But before we make any decisions on rescinding rates or refunding money, I don't want to have to get into a generation project or something and go right back and get rate increases. So I think we need to look at that prior to that option. It's an option. No problem with the option, but I don't want you to say, well, well, now what? We don't have any energy, so we've got to come back. So it's good timing in the event, as Fernando said, we're short on energy for twenty-one. We've got to get something to the board and commission here by first of the year at the latest. And so it'll be good timing, and we we just, I think, between now and then, we can work through some of these best uses of the rates and the and the twenty-nine million.
And I know that I saw something about the rates, like what Commissioner Cowan mentioned about possibly scaling rates, and which I think is is something we do need to consider. But I I'm not sure that's going to be part of the city presentation as far as.
No.
Or is that part of your, was that part of your literature?
It's part of the literature, and I I would encourage the, I would encourage the commission to, and there's a deep section in there about reduction of rates.
Right, I saw that. I just didn't, maybe because there's been so much stuff over the last couple of days.
Yeah, and it's a, and 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 the impact, one, to the customer.
Right.
They're going to get a reduction, but their bill's going to go higher because of the fuel charge, the supplement's gone. So you're giving a false sense of a rate reduction when you're actually going to have a rate increase. There's nothing we can do with that, and it's very clear in the presentation. And just take take a look at that when we, when you go in there and 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 take a look at that because that, and the biggest part too, and it's a major part, is the impact to the city on transfer.
Right, right.
Huge reduction in money you're going to be getting from the reduction of those rates.
Right.
Which is fine, but you all need to be, our job is to make you aware of that and say, why did you ever let us do this? It's in there. There's no shortcut on that.
Right, I I totally get that part.
Okay, so just be be cautious and take a look at that. That's why we provided the supplemental information. Certainly can roll those rates back. The commission didn't can do that, but there's consequences to that. And we just need to be aware. We need more generation. Transfer goes and the bill goes up. It's not a good combination.
Was that the end of y'all's presentation, John?
Yes, unless there's any questions.
Hi, this is Leandro. If I may, I I did want to emphasize the reason we move forward with the streetlight LED conversion is because that will provide savings to the city. And and I I believe the city's program on on HVAC improvements and such is is dependent on those savings. So we we were working together with with city staff to to achieve, help them achieve that goal. So so that's that's something we need to consider as we start looking at the projects that that are on the city's list.
Hey, John, this is a Tim. On this fuel subaccount deal, we keep talking about it, but I think it would probably, and I know I could keep on coming back to this, to simplify any issues for your average customer. But I think we need to explain how them paying a higher rate and that goes into the fuel subaccount to keep their bill lower is different from them just paying a lower rate. Because somebody's going to say, well, why should I be paying this extra percentage when they can just lower my bill by this percentage? You know, and I think it has something to do with, you know, I don't know anything about this stuff, but obviously you're buying in bulk or whatever. So that provides a more power with that dollar. And I think Leandro had touched on that. But a supplement. Customer doesn't understand those stuff.
Yeah, the supplement though to offset that high fuel charge and you saw those spikes on the high fuel charge. That's the customer's going to incur those.
Right, but I'm saying your average customer doesn't understand that, you know, they just know that, hey, lower my bill by 4% instead of, you know, me paying 4% and you using it to buy fuel.
Except the fuel charge can get out of hand and there's no way to subsidize that.
Right.
That's.
Well, that's why. That's why we're so grateful to have your expertise and that I will give to you, Mr. Bruziak. Led the helm and to explain these things in such detail where we all understand.
Yeah, I mean, I I want to educate and this, you know, this is a lot at this this workshop. But I I want you all to be, to understand it, completely understand the pros and cons of all. They're all good recommendations, but they have pros and cons on each one of them. And before we we do something on it, we just all need to be aware of that. So we'll work on that. We'll try to simplify that, Tim. We talked about that last night of how do you show that to a customer? You're going to lower my rates 22% and my bill goes up, right?
Yeah, I mean, I got asked that question all the time and me trying to expect somebody as I'm walking through HEB or something, it's not, it's not making the connection. Because it's something somebody's not going to sit down or, you know, stand there and, okay, well, these are the fuel prices and how that correlates. So I I don't know if there is a way to make it summarize and easy for your average customer to understand. But but if there is, I'll have confidence that you guys can figure that out.
We're.
One way we can do it is is show them a bill that that was in place before April 16th, maybe, you know, six months or 12 months before that, where we were actually recovering from the customer, a higher fuel factor. And then what it's been since April 16th. So they can see their bill and how the difference in 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 the the bill reduction plan, what it did for them. So we we can try to do something like that on a on a standard bill.
Yeah, it seems like it comes down to a couple of things. One is the fuel factor, which you don't control, which is kind of, it it's, it just fluctuates. And then the second one is a is a transfer to the city, which is on the city side, we're going to have to figure that out and the impact to the city on that. We used to have something similar at T S C. We used to have, we used to charge X amount for tuition. Then we would, we would always keep about $2 to $3 million a year that we would use. Then we'd call a trustee scholarship to offset the tuitions. So it's kind of very similar structure where you have a a fund to offset costs to bring it back to a certain level. We used to do the same thing at the college. Then we just lowered the tuition and eliminated the trustee scholarship. But but we'll definitely, we understand the impact and I know Mr. Bernal does the impact on the transfer back to the city, so we'll have to have that discussion internally. But I appreciate you explaining it and and there has to be an easier way to explain it for for the public to understand. So at some point, we can, we can hopefully have that discussion.
We'll work on it.
Mayor, commission members, on the final item, we do not have a PowerPoint per se. We did provide a one in the packet that was provided, that that was presented last fiscal year as part of the current year budget. That's where that performance contract was proposed. But I'll allow Ms. Walker to walk you through that. What I would just add, as I was hearing how Mr. Bruziak and I could work together and hold hands a lot more. There are several opportunities to do that. And we have, for example, the land use planning that needs to be updated. That's a five-year update that's needed. That would inform some of these projections with population. There's also economic development that we're planning more in collaboration with our EDCs. Plugging in P U B would be the wise thing to do. We're also having discussions as a city now on our city and the disruption that happened in the broader economy. We also have taken a growth management approach on being more fiscal sustainable with how we grow. And we recently capped the five-year general fund financial forecast. So a lot of these activities that the city is now undertaking, we can hold hands with P U B on. And that would minimize the issues of what is being on 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 one side of 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 the equation that would have an unintended consequence on the city side. Because we have been discussing the very issue of transfers between general fund and our enterprise funds, whether it's coming into general fund or or general fund subsidizing. So these are all opportunities and points that we can hold hands in. If we do that, we will likely likely be in in lockstep a lot more with P U B just naturally because those are all plans that have some type of impact on the utility side of things. And one of my suggestions to to John would be that we work together on trying to link as many plans as we can so that we have more continuity in in our decision making.
I just hope that y'all keep us in the loop too. Yes, we will, Commissioner.
Hey, Mr. Bernal, do you want to go ahead and take it from here?
Oh, Mrs. Walker will basically walk you through where we are, where we started with the discussion on our facility needs, where we felt we fell behind with deferred maintenance throughout most of our city facilities. We were proposing to take this innovative alternative funding approach where a performance contract would entail a menu of energy efficiency projects that would include streetlights. And by doing so, we would cut costs and have a self-funded mechanism for reinvesting into our utility, into our facility needs. It wasn't intended to be a panacea. The funds that we were seeking to generate would fund a lot of those high ROI type improvements, lighting being one of those. But we also have other structural needs throughout our facilities that we'd have to find funding for the balance of what we could not do through this type of program. But I'll let her kind of walk you through where we are now.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners and and P U B board members. I'm Elizabeth Walker. And yes, as the city manager had indicated, this is a collaboration between P U B and and city has been at the staff level for the last several months. As far as brainstorming how it is, perhaps we could construct between the two entities, what is traditionally a performance contract? Because it is that the city is blessed to effectively have its own utility. And I'm I'm working out the the program by which it is, as the city manager indicated, accelerating the replacement of the city's streetlights, which P U B already does now, but it does so on kind of a break-fix method to accelerate very intentionally the replacement of or the conversion of those streetlights to LED fixtures. And then leveraging the savings annually from those reduced energy consumption from those streetlights to make improvements that would enhance their energy savings across city facilities and and ultimately augment some of our our maintenance costs there. And so the commission had previously reviewed in January a memorandum of understanding towards that intent, which is to consider those types of projects, whether those be HVAC improvements or lighting retrofits or building automation. But it would have to be, the the spirit of projects would have to be consistent with the the shared pursuit or the common objective with P U B, which ultimately is to shed load, which is to reduce the energy consumption across the P U B grid. But I I have heard from the the two governing entities this evening that this would be a a project perhaps that we would consider with the whole of the project lists. And we can continue to evaluate that and and bring that back to the two governing bodies for their consideration as far as how it is perhaps that a streetlight conversion would be financed. They have located my. After all, I'm happy to walk through any of this. If you'd like me to revisit, some of these slides were previously presented to the commission and last for for the current fiscal year as part of last year's budget presentation, which was to introduce the concept of a performance contract. And then moving through these slides, how the performance contract typically works to leverage energy savings to make additional energy improvements. And what it is that we had at the time estimated to be the potential savings, which will have changed because it is that the P U B has since changed their LED rate structure. And so we'd have to run those calculations again. But if you would advance the slides here. And again, advance. And again, advance. These are some of the various improvements we had identified where it is, unfortunately, there had been some deferred maintenance across various municipal facilities. And where is that we could seek to close that gap on the deferred maintenance by making intentional energy improvements. So the left-hand most column is those types of energy improvements. And the rows across are the various facilities that we had identified. And so a working team of staff members at P U B as well as on the city side had then been evaluating the extent of these improvements and the corresponding costs so that we could provide a prioritized list to our respective bodies. Next slide, please. These were the original estimates and granted, these are almost a year old now. But at the time, the idea was an estimate of about $9 million in order to generate $14 million in savings over a 15-year lifecycle of those streetlights. So combined to net savings of about $5.2 million. Next slide, please. Obviously, the needs across municipal facilities exceeds what it is that we had identified on the previous slide. And so it was working towards prioritizing what could be eligible as part of the P U B's intent through that integrated resource plan. And then for the city to then identify separate funding that perhaps we could commit, whether it be through repurposed COs or new COs, should the debt capacity allow, to make the investment in the remainder of these projects as identified. Next slide, please. So that you are aware, there are a little more than 11,000 streetlights across the city for which it is the city then pays for that electric consumption. And these numbers too are just a little dated, but to put in perspective, only 781 of those have already been converted to LED, which leaves over 10,000 still remaining. And that's the current utility cost. There you go. Next slide, please. And so in the last several months, working together, what we had sought to do was to kind of replicate the very best elements of a performance contract between these two entities, by which it is we could intentionally pursue the streetlight conversion to LED so that the city could start capitalizing on the savings of the reduced energy consumption and apply those to other energy improvements. At the time, the P U B had indicated that this might be something they could do using their present staffing levels. And so we could do this this work internally. But it would just take a little longer to do it using existing staffing. And so the idea was then how it is if we took a a longer project implementation approach, how it is then we could dovetail some of the LED streetlight conversion with some of the necessary facility improvements. And that concludes the PowerPoint presentation. We had to sum up what it is that we have done in the last several months since we proposed this concept to the commission for this fiscal year. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Ms. Walker.
Yes, sir.
Plan, when did you all begin discussing the collaboration between P U B and C O B on this plan?
I believe it was probably about December. We had already been working together with P U B towards the concept of a potential performance contract as introduced to the city commission about this time last year as part of the budget consideration. And then the 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 discussion naturally evolved to, is this something that we could do together without necessarily a third-party administrator? And so then that's what it is. We brought to this city commission in January, that MOU that was approved by the city commission, I believe, on January 21st, was to inform this commission of our collaboration and and to have receive your blessing that this would be something that you would want us to consider taking forward. Obviously, we have not programmed any funding towards this initiative yet. That would be something that we would have to defer to the respective governing bodies.
This evolved out of the previous Brownsville Energy Conservation Plan. Is that correct? That that was presented to us, I don't think it was in January. Wasn't there another plan where where the consultants did a a free assessment of doing this light replacement? Didn't that happen last year?
Yes, sir. So as I understand, there had been a consultant that had prepared this streetlight evaluation and the streetlight study towards the possibility of a performance contract.
Are those figures in your slides based on on the the report they prepared for us?
Some of the figures that I presented was from their slide or essentially their estimates from a year ago. And some of that slide information has been updated to include information that P U B has since provided on the number of streetlights and born of their rate study, I believe that was presented in December.
So the original plan kind of morphed into this plan now that you've been discussing with P U B. Or the last year, okay.
Yes, sir. The conversation was, is this something that we can do between the city and P U B alone? Is this something that's feasible that we could implement together? Or is this something that does then necessitate the involvement of a separate ESCO, which is the term essentially used for the third-party administrator of that performance contract?
Okay, that's what I thought. Now, during your discussions with P U B to use them as an ESCO, did they ever divulge to you where they were going to get the funds from to be our ESCO agent or ESCO partner, whatever it's called?
No, sir. I don't believe that I've gotten to the point where it is that we had discussed necessarily the source of the funding. I believe even as Mr. Leandro had indicated, it was simply indicated that it was kind of out of cash balance. I I expected that we would have to then, this would become a self self-perpetuating project that as it is that there was the savings generated from the project, that that's what would create the capacity to do more in the project.
How did you, how did the city of Brownsville factor in the original plan, funding for the original plan with the third-party ESCO? Do you do you recall?
When it is that a a third-party ESCO, should a third-party ESCO be used, then that is part of the entrepreneurial risk. Then that is part of the entrepreneurial risk. That's the investment of that ESCO, that, that the ESCO makes the initial investment in the streetlight conversion and the actual fixtures themselves. And part of the contract then between the city and the ESCO is then how it is they would recoup their investment and then share the utility savings with the city over a prescribed period, over a, a certain term, whether that be the, the lifespan of the asset itself.
And y'all had already factored all that in based on the report from this, uh, the, the free report we got from the consultant? That had already been planned out or factored in?
I think we then informed of their initial assessment. We had an understanding of, of how it could work. But certainly it could work very differently. We could have a, a compressed timetable. Um, we could incorporate other elements that would support the PUB's, um, intent towards the integrated resource plan. I think working together, we, we weren't restricted to follow the traditional ESCO model. We could figure out how it could work best for the community of Brownsville between our two entities.
So then a comparison between the two options would probably be in order between the third-party ESCO and the BUP, the PUB ESCO. Is that safe to say?
Yes, sir. I believe so. I, I would say simply that when it is that there is an ESCO involved, if, if they're a third-party private corporation, then I would expect that there is a, a profit motive built in to that relationship. And so this potential, by, by limiting the relationship between the city and, and PUB, that hopefully that, that's, that's not a consideration, that there is no profit motive. It is simply on maximizing the investment and that return on investment to the community and the ratepayers.
That makes a lot of sense, Ms. Walker. Thank you.
And typically, um, Commissioner, whenever an ESCO is involved, um, the first step they're going to do is typically they're going to approach the city and say, hey, look, we think you have savings. We think you can save money in certain ways, but they're not going to, I'm sure they didn't give Ms. Walker an entire blueprint as to what to do to save money. They kind of just say, look, we can save you money and if you want to know how, you got to hire us. So they're not going to give us a blueprint or any sort of schematic as to what it is, it's, it's going to save us money. They want to lure us into hiring them, but, um, I will, I will point out.
Been able to have made that determination based on what the figures are that they gave us, right? So that didn't.
We're not going to give you a, a straight-up figure, but what I'm getting to though is, um, that's always, that's always an option still. Uh, because I think the MOU between the city and PUB includes a termination clause of like 30 days or something. So if we ever wanted to go another direction, I think we could. And I think it's clear that, uh, we're going to evaluate all options. I think that's what we should do at the very least, Ms. Walker. So we just got to make sure what we're doing is, uh, is going to save us and be the best approach.
That's where I was going with that, Mary. Right, I agree with you.
Yep. Okay, Elizabeth, is that it?
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. We'll, we'll bring it back to the commission.
Thanks. Do we need a motion to adjourn? Was there any other items that we need to discuss, uh, Ms.?
Mayor, I was just going to say, Commissioner, if, uh, any of our board or wanted to say anything or our chair before we, we adjourn. I know some of them haven't spoken tonight, but just wanted to offer that if they want to speak, any comments from the rest of the board? Or Commissioners?
I'll let the, our PUB board see if any of them want to speak before I give my closing comment.
Okay, so at this time, I'd just like to thank our guests from the city. Uh, thank them for their service to our community and thank them for being our partner. And again, thank you all that participated in today's dialogue. Uh, again, the purpose of it is so that we can work together and obviously we all have all great ideas on how to serve our community. Um, we're going, again, like I stated, we're going to look at all those and we're going to make the best decision, the best impact that improves our community. Um, and I want to thank everyone today for taking the time to participate. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anybody else from PB? All right, and do we have any Commissioners want to say anything before we adjourn? No?
That all we need to say.
I just want to thank everybody as well for their time. Uh, we learned a lot today and, and we, we realized that there's still a lot more to learn. Uh, some of this stuff isn't that easy. It's taken me several times to try and understand it and, and, uh, the ratepayers and the, and the customers certainly, I'm sure want to understand it a lot better. But, uh, got some really good ideas and, and I'm happy to see collaboration between the entities. Something we haven't had in a while, I think, and, and I look forward to more of that. So for now, I know Mr. Bernal and Mr. Brusiac are going to continue their conversations and let's try and figure out a really good use for this money. Something that's going to bring a return for our citizens and, and make our city, uh, uh, more attractive and, and a better city. So with that, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you guys.
I'll second. Thank you.
Ms. Tetra's motion.
We need a motion.
We had a motion to adjourn in a second. Uh, any discussion on that? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Safe, safe, everyone. Good to see you all.
Thanks. Bye, Commissioner.
Madam Chair.
If not, uh, Dr. Benavides can probably adjourn us as vice chair, if he's still there.
Due to.
All right, who's left? Lopes?
Yep. No.
I'll, uh, I'll motion to adjourn. This is Patricio.
Patricio, all right, we have a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Aye.
Motion in a second, any discussion on that? Those in favor of adjourning PUB meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we stand adjourned on that as well. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks. See you later.
All right.